Father God, we pause and we thank you for the opportunity and privilege that we have in this county to serve on behalf of our constituents and we today ask for your grace and your wisdom, direction as we make decisions. We pray for that. Those that wear badge and uniform, those that protect us, we ask you to watch over them and keep them safe. So direct us this afternoon and keep us at your prayer. We pray in Christ's name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the May 5th Commissioners' Meeting. You've been presented the agenda and the minutes from last month, last meeting. Any alterations or changes?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We had payroll of 310, 331, oh seven, and claims of 1,011, 720, and 42 cents. Motion for payroll and claims?
Motion for the financials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sheriff.
As of today, we have 65 inmates in jail. Forty of those are pretrial circuit, 20 pretrial superior, three DOC, and zero F6. The only update I have for you on the kitchen drainage issues, we had, I had reported last time, Solace O'Brien came in, prepared documents for us to put out for bid to just focus on the kitchen. That's priority right now. Last week I had Nate put out the proposals to contractors with the intention that the bid would be hopefully below 50,000. I had two groups, Dillon Group and Chambaus, that came and did walkthroughs last week. So that's kind of where we stand right now. We're just in the process of trying to collect bids at this point. So if I know more, I'll let you guys know more.
All right.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Sean.
Evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The crews have been out working on the roads that we will be sealing this year, looking at approximately 80 miles. Went out to the road conversions and sowed in seed for the front slopes so we can prevent erosion. I've also been out, or they have also been out cleaning ditches out so we can keep all this rain flowing to the rivers where it belongs instead of on our roads. Dust control will begin May 7th and 8th. So it'll take two days to do the first application, then they usually wait it's about a week to two. As long as weather, weather's fitting, they'll come back and apply the second coat. The local tracks, they're working into connections at Adams Street and then also at the New Hoosier and the Old Hoosier. Started on April 21st with the four weeks of closure. We are hoping to have it open in two weeks. We'll see how that goes with the weather. Bridge 51 has completed, but they were delayed on pavement markings. The pavement markings will be put down on Wednesday, and then 300 West will be opened up on Thursday. I left a couple things in there from a previous, yeah, the asphalt paving out was from last meeting's notes. Bridge 106, they started pouring curb and span rail walls, and they're still on schedule for the completion of 11, 725. The highway garage is duplicate from last week. And then last, just, I know you guys know, I'm just going to make it public, but I have submitted my letter of resignation. My last working day will be on May 15th.
Sorry to see you go, man.
Thanks. Thank you for our service to our county.
I mean, I thank you guys for the opportunity to serve you. I enjoyed being back in my home county. I wish you and the community all the best success, and maybe we'll run across paths in the future.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Nate.
Just a couple project updates here. First off, with Meridian Road, last meeting, we had you sign the LPA contractor agreement. I put that together with the rest of the submittal packet to get to NDOT, and I submitted the request for funds last week. Bridge 71, the NDOT LPA contract, Jeff, I think was sent to you late last week?
Thursday.
And that was docu-signed?
Mm-hmm.
Did you sign that?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I brought a copy in case anybody needed to look at that or anything.
It was already approved, so I just had to wait for the LPA to come through.
And then the last update here, so we're doing a road conversion on County Route 800 East, just north of 224, and while we have that road under construction, we decided to replace its covert Jefferson 31. But as you can see in the picture there, it used to be three parallel pipes, and I talked to Kim, the road foreman in that area, and he talked about how there's always like farm fodder debris in the spring with the rains and stuff, and one of the pipes is actually failing anyway. So it was a good time to replace it while we have it under construction before it becomes hard surface and have to tear it up in the future to do so. So we were able to utilize a piece of existing box that was left over from another project because it took the same size. So saved a little bit of money there, got a big chunk of concrete box out of our yard. So you can see there's going to be a much more open channel for the debris to be able to hopefully flow through and not have a stoppage there every spring.
Sure.
So if you guys get up that way, you can take a look at it.
Good job.
Definitely will.
That's all I've got for this week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do we want to address rights of way at this time?
Yes.
Okay. We have four rights of way to, or for which we're seeking your approval. They are at 850 South, the Geisel property, 1100 South, Stoffer property, 300 West, Confer property, and Jeff Road owned by a Davis Trust. So we seek your approval. Three of those are highway, and one is APC.
Make a motion to approve the rights of way.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Judge Kerkhoff.
Good evening.
Hello, Your Honor.
Aye. I'm here tonight to, in my capacity as Chair of the Community Corrections Advisory Board. At our most recent session of the advisory board, the following motion was passed. The advisory board hereby appoints the Assistant Chief Probation Officer beginning June 21st, 2025, to serve as interim Director of Community Corrections for a period of 90 days or until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the advisory board, whichever is later. This interim is, this interim appointment is subject to approval by the county executive body as required by statute. The advisory board will review this interim appointment and determine next steps at that time. As you're aware, that's the motion, as you're aware, under Indiana Code 11, 12, 2, 3.5, the appointment of a director for the community corrections program must be made by the Community Corrections Advisory Board, but is subject to the approval of the county's executive body. This interim appointment was made to ensure continued continuity of operations following the resignation and retirement of former Director Poindexter, while also providing advisory board time to evaluate the long-term options for restructuring or permanent leadership. The Assistant Chief Probation Officer brings relevant experience and proven administrative competence and professionalism, and his temporary leadership will ensure stability, accountability, and operational consistency during this transitional period. I respectfully ask you approve this interim appointment in accordance with the statute requirements, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? I know this is an open talk.
I just sat through the hour and forty-some minute presentation the other morning for this. We have a position that we need continuity. We need someone to step in. Is it the right thing? We don't know. We haven't done this for 35 years. It's not like you just rehearse this and do it every other year. That being said, we have qualified people in staff. We have other qualified people in the probation offices that could step up and fill this position. Timing-wise, we have another meeting, I believe, in June sometime. I would, I would support a temporary position and would like to have applications in that would totally have an opportunity to apply for the position when the time comes. Timing is totally something I could defer to you gentlemen to provide additional insights in that regard.
I have some questions, Your Honor, that I'd kind of like to get some clarification on, and one, some of these are about the probation department. Right now is the Assistant Chief Probation Officer, is that a full-time position for the county?
He is, is full-time, yes, he's full-time.
Right now, what's the, what's the current pay for the Assistant Chief Probation Officer position?
I don't have in front of me to tell you that what the pay is. What I want to clarify is I'm not, this, this is being done in a way that he is doing it as his duties as a probation officer, not being paid for by the grant or by project income from Community Corrections.
So he would still be being paid by the probation department, but then acting as capacity in the Community Corrections Department?
With solid duties as a probation officer.
So I'm a little, I'm a little stuck as to if he's performing community correction services but still being paid by the probation department, how that would be proper?
So generally, and Mr. Sorek can step in if he thinks I've misstated this, so generally, probation officers work for the discretion of the court. Under the code, Indiana code, there's many places where community correction, home detention services can be offered through home detention, through probation. This is just one of the tasks that can be assigned to a probation officer. From, from whether I have them supervise juvenile probation, probation, probationers or adults, or they supervise only a certain type of adults, or there's just, it's just one more of those structures.
Sure.
Or those instruct, those orders or assignments that can be given.
Okay. Since I wasn't at the meeting, did the advisory board discuss or have concerns about how the probation department would operate without their second-in-charge and performing as usual full-time responsibility for multiple months?
Well, the anticipation isn't that this is the only thing he's doing. This is one of the number of tasks that he will do.
Sure.
And still maintain the other tasks he's required to do.
So you pretty much feel like the probation department could be without him at this point, performing all of those tasks and then taking on some more?
I don't see it as them being without him. I see that as this is one more assignment of his job. There will, there will be some restructuring of the duties of himself and other probation officers to make up some of that difference, but overall, what I see is a more efficient and better utilization of the existing services that we offer that will provide, have more efficiency, accountability, streamlined the operations. What I see it as more of a consolidation of these services, not, not separate silos. And so I see it as, while it'll increase what he's doing, because it adds one more element of his job title, his job duties, it, it, it's part of an overall plan that we see as a expansion of probation services that can be offered, so that it's much more streamlined and a much better, a much, much more efficient model is what I see it as.
Sure. I guess if I were to look at my, my own business as an example, if I can take somebody out of a department and put them somewhere else and let them work there, I, I start to wonder if I really needed them in the department they came from to begin with.
Sure.
So, I mean, it seems like a natural question. And if, my first initial thoughts are if we've now taken him away from, and I understand what you're saying about probation and community corrections kind being the same and sharing tasks, but if we're taking him away from somewhere, let's say as the, because he's really no longer the Assistant Chief of probation if he's running community corrections, would we need to take applications then for the Assistant Chief position in probation temporarily? If he's stepping down from that spot or he wants to apply for it later on?
Well...
And again, just a question.
No, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to...
I just don't want to feel like probation's possibly underutilized or overstaffed right now.
No, I understand, I understand.
Okay, okay.
What I'm, what I'm looking at it is more of, rather than looking at two different silos of community corrections and probation, I'm looking at merging these into one silo, a bigger silo, but one silo. And I think that that position would maximize both departments' utilization is the thinking.
I think that eventually that would be the plan, right? Down the road is where you'd like to go.
If this, yeah, and I'm, and today, tonight, I'm not looking at this, I'm talking about for the next nine days.
But this would be like the first step, because you gotta get there, do an assessment and see if that'd even work?
Yeah, it's correct.
Sure, okay. So at that point, let's look at that, what that would look like. So essentially, this body here, our, our responsibility at that point would just be basically to sign for the grant every year, and we'd be kind of hands-off, other than a board position?
You have your board positions that represent you at every meeting. You certainly have that. And you, so our current Community Corrections Department, the way it's structured, does receive general fund money, so the council has a role in the, in the fiscal side of it.
Right.
But there are many departments that operate with, with general fund money, but there's some that operate, many operate without, that rely solely on grants and the grant from the Department of Corrections and the project income. If, sorry, you, if you, if, if, you're, you're, I'm sorry, your oversight, so, so if, if we're not receiving general fund money, you have, you're, this board, the Commissioners have the, you have the financial oversight over the, over the, over the community corrections.
Uh-huh.
You follow, I'm saying, because you have the ultimate authority over the grant.
I do.
So you, in a, in a, in a sense, let's say you serve or step into that role of the council generally would have with funding, if, if we don't, if we don't draw out, get general fund money for these positions.
Okay, okay. Has the board even conferred with Mr. Pastore that he even wants these additional responsibilities?
I, as the Chair of the Board, have, and his, his, his direct supervisor, Greg Pastor, who's also a member of the community advisory, has spoken about it correctly.
Okay. Has the board looked at or asked for applications and qualifications of the individuals who have applied right now for the Director of Community Corrections position that were posted?
We did not post the job opening. There was some communication from Mr. Stringer and I about doing that, and I think a combination of, I think he had some personal obligations, I had vacations, I think we just kind of didn't go any farther than that. Ultimately, that position has been posted. I think, given the duties of the board, I think there's some questions that we ought to be asking about, you know, the, the current position is, is filled by a person with 35-plus years.
Sure.
And should, should that rate, should the, the rate of pay, should that be the same? Should we, should we evaluate that? Should it be modified? Should we look at the job duties, the description, the job descriptions? I think that's part of the overall assessment, and part, had to follow up with, the board did pass the creation of a five-member subcommittee to both get some feedback from Mr. Pastore if this would pass, that he, we have more insight of the day-to-day operations, he can provide us what's going on, but then also look at what, what's the best option going forward, and, and look at these applications and see if anyone applies, if that's a position, how we want to fill it.
Sure. I'm, I'm still struggling in my head to make sense of having an interim director for 90 days or a few months to assess things and then risk that the actual director that's eventually appointed by the board and approved by the Commissioners would have a completely different vision or make this endeavor kind of a wasted, waste of time or effort if, you know, that person does come in and like, well, I mean, you've set it up like this now, but here is a more efficient and better way to do it. It just, it feels like a waste of effort and kind of short-sighted if, if we intend to putting in a different director at another time.
Sure. And I can understand that concern. So since, in, in December of 2023, the JRACT Subcommittee, which is the Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council, formed a Subcommittee to look at the best utilization of community supervision, both probation and community corrections, and whether or not that would be a model we should consider. So we've been talking about this for a period of time. What I would, what I would advocate for you today is simply this. If we have a direct, so, so what, what I'm proposing is operating without a director as we traditionally have had. If we've just filled this role, we've got to, we're paying, so we've hired someone and paying someone. What I'm proposing doesn't really cost the county anything to do this as a, as a test. If it works, we could, we can look at how to best finalize this and, and make it more of a permanent option. This board always has the ability in future years to revisit this in the grant application process, to say, we think it should go back, and you should have representatives on the, on the board, on the advisory board as well, to say, we want to go in a different direction. We think that, that the best option would be to have a traditional director as we've done in the past. If, if we decide that, two years, let's say we hire a director, two or three years from now, we decide, you know, let's look at a different option, there's some better models. We either have to, we've now have a person who's, this is their employment, and we either have to remove them, restructure their pay, or do something. Right now, we don't have to do any of those things because we're just, we're not filling the position. We're just going forward with existing personnel. It's, it's, you know, you made a comment earlier about in your, in your, in your personal, in your business life, moving someone from one department to another. I think this is more, to look at it more of a, it's kind of trying to reshuffle things a little bit is what I'm looking at, and to try to best utilize the existing people we have. And with the director's departure, I think this is an opportunity to, to look at that without having to hire anyone, without having to potentially remove somebody because we've, now we're overstaffed. We can just kind of start from scratch, look at it, and, and be honest with you, we might get, in 90 days, my Assistant Chief might say, this is more work than I could have thought, and we, it just needs to have its own person. And it might, it might happen, if, if this works and we decide, let's try this for a little while, and we try it for a year or two, two years from now, he might say, this is just bigger than we need it to be, and we can always pull back. We can always pull back and hire somebody.
But as it is, as it stands right now, though, probation and community corrections are separate departments, correct?
They are.
Okay. So I'm still a little unclear as to which salary and how he will be paid, either current probation or community corrector, community corrections director pay?
He would be paid his current salary with no additional increase. Essentially getting, asking someone to do additional work without additional compensation. That's, that's where, this is just one of his duties. Because, in talking to him, because, like I do, I want the best program we can give, and I think this is the most efficient and effective model we can put together. That's what I'm asking.
And understand where I'm coming from. You know, my only duty is to best represent the people in my district and the people of Wells County, so that's the spirit of these questions.
I understand.
I'm, I'm still feeling like it's not a fully cooked idea from an operations or fiscal standpoint, and I've said before, like, these are worries I've had. It's just not something I can support right now until I have more time to adequately explore what all our options are.
Sure.
But that's where I stand. You got two other people here that may have differing opinions, but I, I appreciate answering my questions, and thank you.
Mr. Nate, thank you.
Judge, you know, I've had countless conversations about this, so, and I'm, I'm just reading from the paper, so it could be misstated, but it says in the paper, Judge Kerkhoff, who chairs the Administrative Board, stated, "Within or after 90 days, Pastore will determine whether to extend the expiration process, proceed with the department merger, or change course."
All due respect to the newspaper, I think that's a misstatement.
Okay.
The intention was that the, the, that's why the board has to make that decision, and there's that Subcommittee that's kind of to work on a more, a little more flexible, a little more regular scheduled, and bring that back to the larger board to make that determination, not Mr. Pastore. That's in there. If I said that, and she quoted me, that I misspoke, and if, if I didn't say that, it may have been a mistake, but that was not the intention.
I just want to make sure, I've, I've requested that we have options, right? I want to look at all the options, look at the pros and cons, and determine based off those options. Right now, the way I see it, if, and that's how I took it out of the paper, and a little bit of how I'm taking it now, is that this is a course we're going, and there really is no option. I want to see what they are. I'm the one that had him post the job to see who else we got, what our other ones are, and nothing against Mr. Pastore, because I met with him, seems like a great guy, but you only get to choose from one.
I understand.
I want some options.
And, and I'll tell you why that, why he was named, and trying to, to, as I mentioned, I'm not looking at this as a particular, we're taking him and replacing Director Poindexter with him. This is, we had to have a name for, we had to have a, a position. Long-term, what I, if, if this, if this were to work, and, and you, we want to go this route, what I envision is more of a reconfiguration of both probation and community corrections to more, more have one, one department. Different job duties within that department, same personnel, but, but just in some ways expanding what each of them is doing is what we're looking at, just a, just a reshuffling of how we're doing some things. The reason I chose to make this the way I made the motion that we did is because the statute that I just read, you talks about the appointment of a director. So there, if you keep going in Title 35, there are other ways you can structure home detention, or community corrections department. Home detention is just one service that can be part of a community corrections program. And so long-term, I don't know that we would name a person so much as name, this, we would have a plan, a written plan to formulate this, to reflect what our intentions are, yours as well, and preserving your kind of authority over this, not, not trying to take it over permanently, because again, as long as we take Department Corrections grant money, there has to be an advisory board. And, and as long as there's an advisory board and grant application process, advisory board has to pass it, and you would have to pass it. So that, that doesn't go away. So part of the reason I did this, in this interim period, was just to name an individual so that we can continue to see temporarily in the way that we are, that's why it was done in that way.
So in my eyes, I think it's, it's a point in time where we can put somebody temporarily in, review what's going on, see the pros and the cons of what's going on in that department if there's changes, if there's pros or cons, might get in there and say everything's running fine, but take a third-party evaluation of where we're at, where we need to be, what we want, and make that change. I guess my only, and I don't know that I'm ready to vote on this today by any means, I'll leave that up to the other Commissioners, but I need some time to go through that and understand a little bit more of what, what does success look like? That hasn't been defined to me. What does, so we get 90 days down the road, who decides? How do we decide? Is it good? Is it bad? What are we looking for as key milestones to say, this needs to change, that needs to change? Here's the, here's what I looked at that I don't like? Here's the, here's what I looked at that I don't like that's operating that way, here's the things that I think are great, here's my proposal, and here's my proposal of how we would move on. Maybe it's combining, maybe it's not combining, but I haven't seen a clear plan of what are the, what is the criteria to evaluate from where we're at to where we're going? That's my hesitation at this point. And I'll be honest, when I read that in the paper on whatever day that was, Friday, Thursday, I'm like, it it appears, and again, it's third party, that the decision's made that once we get through this, somebody's going to decide. And my my point is, we don't even know what other candidates are out there to look at at doing it.
No, and and my motion today is is temporary. My motion with you is that this, you would review it as well in ninety days. So that that's my intention, that's the the way I drafted the motion today that we passed, is that you, in ninety, in ninety days, the advisory board is going to review it again, but you would also have to review it again.
And this wouldn't take effect until the twenty-first, after Mr. Pointex returns? So we have, we have a little bit of time to discuss it.
We do. You know, obviously, we're getting, don't want to make it too long down the road if we, either way, we got to go, you know, there's people who are on, being supervised right now, who probably right now, if I had to guess, there are some sentences that are out there past that date, so we don't want to get limbo where there's no no supervision, but.
We have to have something by the twenty-first.
Correct. But um, and the reason, just to be clarified too, is that our next advisory board meeting is June eleventh, which is, we meet quarterly, which that's prior to Mr. Pointex's retirement. But so to start ninety days, if we don't start it until the twenty-first, I, puts us out either to the next advisory board meeting, which should be approximately ninety days from June eleventh, I guess, sends out a little bit farther, just to give ninety days, just to have a number, just to just to start somewhere. Too much, too early, and I just, you can't, how do you, how do you gauge whether it was good or not, if someone's starting new, ninety is a pretty short period of time, but if it's less than ninety, it's even less time, and I, but ninety days, more than ninety, I certainly understand, um, you know, we want to start, if we don't get too far down the road and find out that's not working.
I suggest, it's just a suggestion, you guys can help decide, but we let the, we table this till the nineteenth, give us some time to, give some time with the judge and understand what's going on, maybe other opinions, but uh, you obviously have the votes from your board to to make those motions.
I'd be okay with moving it till the nineteenth.
I'm willing to look at it again.
The nineteenth?
You're the point person, Judge, to come to for now.
So it'd be May nineteenth?
May nineteenth, two weeks from today.
I'm not available, maybe I can still check some.
Or what would be the one after that, June?
Would it be at five o'clock as well?
Nineteenth or?
June ninth.
You said June ninth?
Could be June second.
June second or May nineteenth?
Excuse me, yes, okay.
Personal matters after work on the nineteenth, but um, I can, it's up to you how you want, I can, I can be here, if I, you mean to be here, I'll be here, if you want to do it in June, we can do it till June, but I.
Let's um, I'm sure the commissioners will contact you on their own to get some more detail and and before the the deadline to the Thursday prior, which would be the fifteenth, we can decide.
Okay.
Does that have to be done right now?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, if there's some concern or issues you want to address, certainly.
Okay.
Okay, any else, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. RSD funding.
I think building, filling an infrastructure.
Oh, sorry, I skipped Petro. Sorry, you guys are, you're on deck, sorry. Got to cross them out or I'll miss somebody.
You should have stood up, stood up and yelled at us.
Not at all. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I handed each one of you a packet of paperwork, just as a, an FYI, so you could, you could look at it later. I came in in April advising you that Wells County had been selected for the FEMA BRIC grant. Today, I must inform you that on April tenth, I received an email from the Indiana, Indiana Department of Homeland Security stating that an advisory email had been dated April the fourth, twenty twenty-five, from the FEMA Administrator Cam Hamilton, announced the decision to shift the agency's priority from pre-disaster mitigation activities to disaster response and recovery measures exclusively. It has been stated that the projects that have been selected in the past years but not been dispersed will no longer receive payment. So on April the eighteenth, pardon me, I've received yet another update from the Department of Homeland Security stating that fiscal year twenty twenty-four BRIC funding is canceled. I am still waiting further information to see if we will be chosen for any type of other grant funding in its replace, but as of right now, it it doesn't mean that we will. So, long story short, what we just discussed last month about getting this and looking into doing our mitigation program, um, is going to be on us to fund that project. I am currently waiting for another response from the Department of Homeland Security on on letting me know if there's going to be any other funding available for that, but um, I'm currently looking forward and, you know, continuing to look forward into that kind of adventure, so.
That was a twenty-four thousand with an eight thousand match?
That is correct. So, um, but like I said, I give each one of you a packet stapled that explains pretty much what I just told you and where it came from, there's a couple of emails attached as well, but that's just um, out of, out of my control and out of the Department of Homeland Security, out of Indianapolis.
Did they even give you any idea if they'll enter, do something similar to this again?
As of today, no. So they're turning it all to recovery and response versus pre-premit mitigation. So I really don't have any other insight, that's why I forwarded you guys, or handed you the same information that I received, the same emails, the same attachments and so forth. So sadly enough.
Well, you do what you could.
But that's all I have for you this evening, gentlemen. Do you have any other questions or things for me?
Keep us informed of what you find out.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely.
All right, now RSD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Commissioners. On behalf of the Wells County RSD, we're back again this um, this month to kind of discuss partnership again with the Toxin project that the RSDs look to pursue through the Indiana Finance Authority. Couple of things that I know were mentioned last meeting in regards to the project scope and uh, some questions, concerns you guys may have had and brought up, one being the City of Bluffton's treatment plant, you know, does it could have capacity and what does that look like? So we've talked with the city, John Omen, who's on our board, who's the city's director of utilities, contacted their engineering firm who worked on their treatment plan, as you can see before you, that's what that plant was designed to be, to meet for the capacities for the, what they projected in the future up out into twenty forty, and one of those line items includes the Wells County Sewer District, as you can see there, and the very right-hand column towards the bottom there, it says nine hundred thirteen EDUs. So just to give you some perspective on what that number looks like, currently with the four active areas that we have with Kingsland, Craigsville, Liberty and Murray, or Liberty Center and Murray, we have four hundred and six EDUs currently, so.
Four oh six or four?
Four oh six, yes. So fifty percent, so right now, what we're looking at with Toxins, another hundred seventeen approximately, and then the two other areas that we mentioned in the past were Riceburg and Petroleum, and that's another hundred forty-five, so we have a total roughly about six hundred sixty-eight, so we'll say six seventy to round things off. So we still have about a little over thirty-five percent capacity left in growth in other areas to explore, even in those twenty forty projected models, so there's ample supply or capacity available for the city's treatment. And we've asked that they supply a letter stating as such, and that's what they basically that they've provided here, Casey, is their uh, their man, their engineer through DLZ, so. The other um, well, concern that was brought up, you know, is this project going to be affordable? And there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of moving pieces with that currently on what that looks like, you know, a lot of that's not known until we get uh, better clarification from the state later this year on what they're actually providing financing. Part of that, what we're looking at is, you know, what partnerships work for the RSD to help aid us to get us to that finish line? Part of that's understanding, you know, what a construction bid's looking like, what's the state's financing terms going to look like with grant and loan, uh, local support potentially from the commissioners as well, all those parts move us closer to the finish line. Right now, the board has, is under contract with Baker Tilly to evaluate rates and understand the finances of the project, and there's kind of a range of where we feel that final rate may lie. Ultimately, the board's intent is, so they want to try to keep rates the same if possible, knowing that, yeah, there may be a rate increase, but that may not necessarily just be due to the project, obviously, construction costs and everything else, replacement costs, and just operations are always ever increasing as you guys experience on a year-in and year-out basis, so um, the lot of that stuff still being evaluated. Currently, it's, there's a projected rates right around kind of where we're at today, but a lot of that's still unknown. We could get a project uh, price that comes back that's way over budget, that may warrant that we may not move forward, but where we could come back and the state says, hey, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars, well, that doesn't work, obviously. So there's a lot of other caveats to that, to where the board may have to decide that even though we have some terms and that are in favor of us, we don't have all of them that warrant this moving forward, it won't proceed, so um, a lot of that, like I said, it's kind of a moving target until we have more information from the state, which we should receiving maybe probably later this fall.
Yeah, the sooner the better, because you see what's going on, state funding's going down, LIT's going down.
Yep.
Taxable income's going down, which is not all bad things, but it's going to give us less to to put out there, so we need to know what the state is so that we can give you an idea of what we can do as a county.
Sure.
Because we'll be down one million, one point four million over time, is this? That's quite a bit.
Is there any obstacles right now that you can tell, that you picture as obstacles going into Toxin?
Uh, the biggest obstacle we see now is just acquiring enough financing to make the project affordable.
Nothing in the, nothing in the ground that's gonna make something twice as expensive as?
No, I mean, the engineering's complete, um, we've actually bid this project out previously, so we have.
Getting under State Road One's not going to be an issue?
No, we already have permitting and all that stuff for that, uh, we have permitting through the state for the actual sanitary system, we have permitting to uh, to perform work within State Road Ones right away, uh, or two twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, so we have all that stuff secured already. Like I said, this project's actually been out to bid, and we found out the financing was shorter than what the state was going to provide, so we already have some rough numbers of what we're looking at, obviously, we've scaled those up with inflation and everything else that we've seen over the last couple of years, so a a lot of those boxes have already been checked. Really, right now, it's just, do we have the financing, the money secured that actually says, okay, yes, we're not going to put a two hundred dollar a month rate out there for somebody to pay for, we know that's not sustainable, so.
I think we wouldn't agree to give you any money if we knew it was two hundred dollars a month.
Uh, we we would hope you wouldn't.
What fiscal year is the completion going to happen in?
So to give you a rough timeline, what we're looking at, so the state will award or announce its priority list in July, the the communities or municipalities that fall in the fundable range will be announced then, that doesn't tell you what you secured financial with their finances yet, that'll come later in the fall. So once those communities are kind of listed, they kind of go through the list, you know, one through, let's say, ten, if they pick ten, they say, okay, who's ready? How much do you need? And they can start that evaluation process. So wherever we fall in there is where we'll finally understand, kind of know, and start playing that game back and forth of of what we need in order to proceed forward. So that kind of goes through the fall, typically, it's been probably later September, early October, that we've known some of that stuff, and then by the time we receive that, there's kind of a a window there where we actually get stuff out to bid to contractors, and so let's say we get this out bef- before the the new year for contractors, it was because we could with the the plans and everything being complete, uh, best case, you're awarding probably uh, right before Christmas or even probably mid-January to give contractors some time through the holidays. From there, you probably have a ninety-day window through the state to close out on on all their agreements and all the financing, so you're probably the earliest talking about construction, starting and a shovel in the ground is the summer of twenty twenty-six. Typically, we try to give them a window for about eighteen months, so even there, you're talking at least into the summer of twenty twenty-seven, um, and probably maybe even close, so the fall, pretend, depending, um, so this one's probably going to be an eighteen-month process, we're probably going to give them that much time, just based off the scale of it and just the time and materials some of this stuff takes. Being that we have lift stations, some of those special components that fall within those lift stations take a lot of time to manufacture and get secured and brought over, so. That gives you a kind of a.
Any of the new technology making things cheaper or less maintenance for this gentleman here?
I'll let you speak out, I mean, there's definitely technologies out there, um, a lot of the stuff that we have in our panels is telling LA on an in-and-out basis, hey, this is what you're receiving with your flows, this is what you're experiencing, uh, e- even now, we can evaluate what we're seeing with, uh, if you read in the paper, what we're experiencing with some I and I flows, even though we have a brand-new system, it's impossible to keep some of that stormwater out, uh, but we can see that stuff, and now we can start being proactive and understanding uh, where that comes from, how how we need to mitigate it, who's, who or what we need to maybe isolate and uh, target, so there's a lot of technologies out there, you know, if we had a pair of glasses we could put on and stare underground and see what's going on, that'd be great, but that doesn't exist yet.
Not yet.
Like you did ask about obstacles, we, because when we did the Kingsland project, we got under the railroad, but that would have been a major obstacle if, you know, in this whole process, but it's all done.
Yeah.
We're on the right side of the railroad.
So where do you connect at? Right at two twenty-four and one now? Are we stubbed out that far for the Kingsland project?
Uh, no, this would actually go to, oh, what's? Is it two fifty there? Yeah, at two fifty, there, there's a stub.
That's where our lift station is.
There's a stub out there, uh, waiting and ready.
Just east of the railroad track, there's a man.
Yes, yes.
It's a long, long run from Toxin to Kingsland.
Yes, it is.
When you pay by the foot.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Need it for the flow, though, the whole system is the system.
Flow, and then uh, this is probably the the one and only project that we've had a lot of public support on, uh, there's been a lot of local residents that have been screaming at us for why this hasn't been done, and I know one's in the crowd right now, so.
He's not wearing a royal blue shirt either.
All right.
What was that public comment?
Let us know, I mean, it's good to get this information, I was worried about how much volume, I did talk to Scott Minzer, and he said they had plenty, but the APC should know the delta between how many uh, EDUs that we have filled and how many we have vacant, so that as we grow as a community, we don't overstress the system.
Yeah, what we've worked with the city on from the beginning is having an understanding of every system we've ever seen, there's been growth outside of what we intended to fix, the problem resolving, there's always been growth that follows, so we didn't want to go in naive and say, hey, we have five connections, we only want five. Yeah, we were utilizing what we've seen with diff- uh, different growth trends we've seen in the county, or other things that we've seen in other areas, uh, with projects we've worked on, what growth we've seen in those first initial few years, obviously, there's a big ramp up, and then it kind of slowly meanders out, uh, to be more consistent, and we've kind of seen that already with some of these projects, that was, as we presented before, so.
Last year with the projects that you submitted this with, how many were turned down in the top?
Uh, we we were in the fundable range, but we didn't secure enough financing where the board felt comfortable pursuing forward. They also, the state also had the the caveat of not pushing us higher on the list, because they wanted to see us close some of uh, past projects out, uh, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I think they've misunderstood what was going on there. We had several grants that we kept rolling over, as we said, we had cost savings and different things we were performing through actual construction to save some cost. That money, we kept rolling over to that next project and utilizing that in order to secure, because we knew that we weren't always gonna get six million dollars a pop at a time. And so, that happened, we've made them aware of that. Some of those funds and projects have been closed out at this time, so pretty much everything they've asked the RSD to do at this point, we've done. One of those last components was obviously the, having a local match proceed with the grant application and aiding the package, so hence our presence here tonight again.
What was the commitment that you applied for the match on the one that was turned down, or you didn't feel comfortable with?
Uh, you're talking last year? Last year, we did not supply a local match. Last year, we were relying on carryover funds from the previous cycle, and we were projecting a larger grant amount and request, and I think it's more competitive now, so there's a lot of folks that are still trying to get in there, and I think.
And I'm trying to think of the ones that got turned down, if they're gonna come back in and be.
Yeah.
That you might not. It's hard for me to just say.
Yeah, I think.
If we would've just made it two hundred and fifty thousand instead of two hundred, we would've got it, or one fifty instead of a hundred, or whatever.
I can't speak for the state to say if fifty thousand's gonna sway them one way or another. I do know the one piece that is favorable for the project, since they finally have allowed it to be deemed a low-to-modern-income project. We couldn't get that designation in the past. That does offer the project more avenues for financing and the potential for financing outside of just the normal pot of money that everybody's shooting for. We now check a box that maybe most projects can't check. So, there's that, that we've finally gotten that determination, that it took some time to get there and under, help educate the state, the why and what we're doing and why this should fall in that category.
More to come.
Can we give you a note? Let's see, when's your next meeting?
Our next meeting's this coming Monday, next Monday.
When's your application deadline?
Our application's in, right now, they're kind of in the valuation process of reviewing the, what's all been submitted. June's kind of where they really start at, taking the nuts and bolts of understanding the applications and start finalizing how, how things look.
I think we can make a decision maybe by next meeting, May nineteenth?
Yeah, I mean, there's no requests out there now, other than will we help? We don't know what to help at, because we don't know what your funding's gonna be, right?
We don't know that.
But they would like us to make a commitment that would help their application once it's presented.
I think, I think the state, knowing that the commissioners are willing to supply and aid in the application with some of the financing, is probably the piece that they wanna know for sure. So, if we have that to pair with the application, it checks that box.
That's what I'd like to see, where the lit budget is now, things that people have been asking us for, that might be really tight going forward. And, you know, if you can make a small one for this year, and a small one next year, and a small one that the overall might encompass what they're looking for, or close to it.
Their request is two fifty, is that right?
Two hundred's what we presented in the previous meeting, and that's not something we need upfront. It's something that could even be supplied at the end of the project and be utilized for final closeout. It's not something that necessarily has to be presented, hey, we were awarded, we need it today, and I kind of alluded to that schedule, there's a little bit more time to just, hey, I need it tomorrow.
At least have two years.
That's why we have a three-year lit budget, so we can kind of.
Move it around. For one, I think it's important to make the system run, and we have a mandate from the state, because we have issues in the river, so it's not if we can do it, it's how, we've gotta figure out to do it in my eyes.
I would say, let's try to do it at the next meeting, at least for sure by the second, or the first meeting of June, for sure.
So, plan on coming back next meeting, and then, unless we tell you before the fifteenth, and then at least by the second of June, we'll have some direction.
Sounds great.
Trying to balance out that state funding that's coming through now, so.
In that shortfall, we weren't anticipating either, I don't think.
Oh, we all love budget cuts.
Yeah. I like it when I get my tax bill.
Thank you.
Haven't recognized it in my.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Let's see.
Evening.
So.
Oh, sorry, one quick question before we get started.
Yes.
Have you received all the data and everything you need for this today?
Yeah, the data's here. The, I guess to start off, Betsy, I had a call with Preston, because Seth Wicker would like to meet too, to see if you, somebody from the commissioner, somebody from this county council, and Preston could meet before we made the decision.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you had emailed me that, and then I had not heard anything about when or what time. So, when I saw myself on the agenda, I thought, I'm gonna just come here and see what's going on and see where we're at with that process, so.
So, Mike, to your question, yeah, everything's in this packet that I requested, or a link to everything that I requested, so it's just having an idea. I've spent time reviewing it, but I need some clarifications, and then, because it's a funding request, I moved it on to President Wicker from the county council to get involved too, just to make sure that we all understand what the funds are gonna be used for, and then what current funds are used for.
Okay. And then you also received the grant application documents, so, once we meet for this, then we'll proceed to the grant? Is that what your thought process is?
Yes.
Okay, because the grant is actually due on the sixteenth, I think I indicated that in the email, and your next meeting's not till the nineteenth, so.
We could address the grant now, it has nothing really to do with this request for funding, funds increase.
The grant is written, does include what you currently provide, so I guess I need to make sure that that is gonna stay at least the same, but I, yeah, I do still want to, you know, move forward with the other, based on the fact that, you know, we've not had an increase in the twenty years that we've had Wells on wheels, this public transit, we've upgraded our fleet, we're receiving two more vehicles, as you know, this year, that was part of the grant increase, funding request, or funding request increase, not the grant, but, and then we are looking at, the board's given approval, because we still have several other vans that are past their useful life, to try to go ahead and upgrade additional three vehicles for next year, so.
We made some sort of a commitment, Lisa, I think last time, what was that?
We did forty thousand, I believe was last time, the city did sixteen, the city's increased to nineteen?
No, they're at sixteen.
Thirteen, they went to sixteen.
Yeah, thirteen to sixteen.
Yeah, they went to sixteen, and I've already received their funds for the year, so.
We typically do forty, but the request is to increase by?
Well, we were gonna discuss the amount. You know, I requested that you consider helping with the local match, or paying the local match for the two new vehicles that we're getting this year, and/or increase our general operating fund.
So, what we signed in April, was it for this additional?
What you signed in April was the quarter four of twenty-four's reimbursements. It was the invoice to get reimbursement from the state.
Four of twenty-four.
Yeah.
I think he's talking about. There was a commitment for something, we signed a.
He's talking about the, through the mailhouse, purchase agreement.
Got you.
Oh, that was the QPA, yeah.
Okay.
They have a local share of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents.
Correct. Yes.
So, have we ever done that before?
You've signed the QPA before, you've never provided funds for the vehicles.
So, is this a commitment of twenty-nine thousand?
It's not on your part, it is a commitment on the Wells County community's part, you and us. I mean, so, if you don't give me any money for it, it's gonna come out of our general fund again, like the hundred and seventy-seven thousand did for the eight vehicles in twenty-twenty-four.
So, right now, we're committed to forty thousand, of that, the twenty-nine could come out. She's asking for additional appropriations to cover the vehicles, plus some operating.
I'm just not familiar that we've ever done that since I've been a commissioner, so.
Signed the QPA?
Not, not the signature, the funding.
Right, no, you have not, that's what I'm saying, we've never received money to help purchase our vehicles from the county.
The twenty-nine of the forty would give us basically a balance of eleven thousand and change of our commitment we've made over the years.
Yeah, but the forty is for the operating expenses, towards the fifty-three eleven, the vehicles are under the fifty-three thirty-nine.
Right, you have two different lane items for that.
Yeah.
So, the question is now, do we approve the grant with forty thousand in it, so we're not committed to any more or any less? And then, it gives us some time to go back through for this funding request, to get some more detail and understand where those funds are gonna go, and what they're gonna cover.
Yeah, and back in twenty-three, when we talked about it, and it got tabled, I had checked within that, and we can submit a grant, but you can increase your contribution at any time, so.
Get across.
Thoughts from more discussion around the grant piece?
I have a problem with wishing that forward as it is, and what we've done before. I think what Commissioner Gerber's saying is, he doesn't want to send a big sixty-nine thousand. We're only here for.
At this point, yeah, right now, all we're committed is a forty. If we don't come up with additional, that twenty-nine thousand comes out of their operating budget.
That's the way I understand it, but I'm not opposed to the forty, what we've done before, I'm not. I would, I would support that also, forty.
So, can I get a motion, or would somebody support a motion on the grant, as is?
I'll make that motion to support the forty thousand for the grant right now.
Would it be beneficial to clarify whether that motion includes the prior commitment from the March seventeen meeting for the purchase of the two Chrysler Voyager minivans? I think you've had discussions, I'm not sure that I understand what your motion is.
The motion needs to be made that it's for a total of forty thousand. How they just, how they use that discretion to use that forty thousand is up on them, but it's not for, it's not for forty plus the twenty-nine.
Correct. I think that the motion needs to be sure that you clarify that based upon the prior passage of the March motion, March, from March seventeen.
So, the forty thousand dollar commitment we've always made is, how is it clarified in your record, Lisa? Is it just appropriation out of the lit budget, or X?
For operating funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Add that to the motion, is that all right?
Yeah, it's fine. No, I think that's what we needed to, so I'm okay with that, that current.
And I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Three, zero. Let's, this week, get a calendar date. I'll get President Wicker's calendar, I'll get it over to you, and in between.
Okay.
The four of us, let's meet, so that at least I have some more detail on this budget, and then, once we get that, we can share it with the group and.
If that meeting occurs, then I'm okay to hear if there we need to do additional.
Okay. I would put out to you that Thursday is our senior expo, so, right now, I'm committed to be out there assisting with that, it's a pretty big event, it's open to the public.
See the signs.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a really nice event, it's the biggest one that we've ever put on, and shout out the four H. And then Friday, starting Friday, I'm off for the, that Friday and the following week.
Okay.
If we can do, right, we could do Tuesday, Wednesday, that would be great, otherwise, we'll have to wait till I get back.
Okay. I will reach out to Seth and see if we can get going.
Okay. And then, with what you've put to the motion, we didn't come prepared with grant documents, because it wasn't on the agenda, would we be okay to sign those if we meet Tuesday or Wednesday? Have you signed those, so I can get that submitted?
You could, you could, yeah, for purposes of the minutes, you could have a motion approving that the commissioner, or the president of the board of commissioners has the authority to execute any grant documents at a later time.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Three, zero.
That way I can get it submitted on time.
I'll swing over tomorrow and get them signed.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah, we're still in the process of putting that together, we've got a draft, and I need to send that over to Chris for his approval, so he can see it, and then we'll send it off to the contractor to make sure he has it too. So, we'll communicate with you, Chris, this week.
Perfect, one more question.
Yes, sir.
I think I've got the car out of the river.
Thank you, appreciate the picture, I just showed it to Mike when he showed up here.
What do I need to do?
Drive it.
I think the flood took it down the river and flipped it on its side, so.
How the hell did he left?
Jeff Gilbert, did you make contact back with him?
He's in the jail.
The gentleman that's in the.
I know the car, apparently he's in the jail, but I guess I don't know how to get rid of it, because I have that pile possibly, so.
Can, can we store it in, at the highway garage, just for, behind the fence, for the time being?
Yeah, get to the highway garage, and we'll get a disposition on it.
We'll put it in a corner or someplace, and if you'll just let Jeff Gilbert know, know what we've done with it, so we'll be good to go.
Okay.
Thanks for what you did.
No problem.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm working with Bobby on the RFP. I'm gonna ask that, for purposes of the minutes of this meeting, that we ask Bobby to communicate with our county engineer to make sure we have all the details about what goes into that request for proposal.
All right, I will work with Nate tomorrow to.
Thank you.
That's why I'm using, he's doing it with the jail, I'll get him to Bobby.
Thank you. We've got notice prepared, and we just wanna make sure we've got all the proper information for the request for bids before that goes out.
Timekeeping, wanna go over that one?
Sure. We have received two different proposals for timekeeping systems for the employees of Wells County. Both of these systems are integrated with our current financial system. Right Stuff is one, their total startup cost are twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars with a, an annual cost of fifteen thousand dollars. Attendance On Demand has a forty-four thousand, five hundred dollar startup cost, and annual cost of fifteen thousand, eighty dollars. Either system would be good. What I like about Right Stuff is, we can put all of our matrix pay in there, and it calculates when their anniversary date is, what their pay will go to, you know, have to have our fingers in that. Attendance On Demand, I asked them, they didn't have that option at this point. Right Stuff would, it'll probably be, for either one, it'd be six months wait, and then four to six months before we're active. Right Stuff will also give us a six-month free trial, if we don't like it, then we don't pay in there. Either one would be good.
Didn't Right Stuff, it'll submit the reports from the state board of accounts also in their system.
Yes, and when they clock in and clock out, it automatically goes on their annual timekeeping report, and, yeah.
It clocks all their PTO, all their vacation times, comp time is all figured into that same system.
Just one question in regards to the bottom corner, licensing and support, is that the same amount for both quotes?
Sorry, question.
Licensing and support.
Is that only for the one, or for both?
That's only for the one.
I think the ten eight is for Right Stuff, and the eleven one is for. I think the 10-8 is for Right Stuff, and the 11-1 is for the other one. It just didn't get caught. 11-1's on the top of the second page.
Oh, gotcha.
Just a spacing issue. I know myself and Vicki Andrews and Seth all sat through some of the presentations, and what I see it is, is it's, it's less manual timekeeping. It's clear and concise. The system keeps it. You either have to do it from your computer, or from a remote, or a access site at each site. So, you have to be there in person to log in, so I think it'll take some of the nuances of when they got locked, clocked in, clocked in, when they got clocked out, all of that out. Plus, it'll streamline payroll, reporting, accounting, PTO, the matrix, so it should take the workload off of a personnel person right now.
Somewhat. I mean, she's still gonna have her duties to do, just like we went to remote claims. And, you know, the claims person still has to look at each claim. The only difference is, instead of having a box on her desk or a paper, it's all on her computer, so same way with the timekeeping. She's still gonna have to do all the same tasks. She's just not gonna have a bunch of paper, and she's gonna have to manually enter into the system.
You should be able to import-export this data, right, so you don't have to manually enter it. I'm for it. I think it's...
I believe one of the pluses too, is that it keeps track of vacation, that type of thing, you know. It's sometimes hard to keep track of all that, especially with a paid whole person, so I think that's a plus.
I probably don't know of any business, besides county government or state government, that doesn't have a timekeeping system in it already.
That is true. That is true. So, your recommendation, based on this, Right Stuff? I'll make the motion. I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
3-0.
I won't get the benefit out of it, but she will. All the other ones that are underneath of her, so.
That's what I have. All right, anything from the audience? Ollie, anything from you? Lisa? Commissioners?
No, no, sir.